And get started with the work session. First item of discussion tonight will be impact fees discussion. Who's going to speak to this? Just Wayne or Richard?
Well, I mean, we can kind of just discuss it if you want to come on up. And I guess Deborah, because she's kind of familiar with what's in place right now. But I'll mention that the impact fee study that is currently in place is from 2007. And the impact fee is 1% of new development, correct? And that's split up currently between, I can pull it up. Right now, it's transportation of that 1%. Transportation gets 22.5%. Parks and Rec gets 54.7%. Fire gets 19.3%. And police gets 3.5%. I'm going to...
3.5 to fire.
3.5 to fire.
3.5 police, wasn't it?
3.5 police, and I'm sorry, 19.3 for fire.
Yeah.
And the state statute is pretty broad. It includes stormwater. Anyway, if we probably just need to send the state statute. But where we've done locally, like we do with a lot of laws, is we've narrowed that really what we can spend that money on. But most importantly, we need to put, order another study, which can be paid out of the impact fee fund. An updated study, because we have to charge developers for what our needs are. 10 years is, I mean, it's a no-brainer. We definitely need another study. But I do think, meeting with them and letting them know our biggest concerns right now, because stormwater 10 years ago probably wasn't as big of an issue as it is today. And we can tie that into streets and some of the things that the funds are already going to. But go ahead.
Sure. Well, and the percentages that the mayor just mentioned, it's broken down into two categories. Those percentages apply to residential impact fees. So Parks and Rec gets the lion's share of any residential impact fees that we get. If we, I'm gonna borrow this real quick. When you go to commercial, Parks and Rec does not receive any percentage of an impact fee from a non-residential or commercial construction. There, it's broken down into basically three, and I rounded. But of a commercial impact fee, the fire department gets 18%, police gets 4%, and transportation gets 78%. So you can choose how you want to distribute those fees. The 1%, the enabling legislation that allows us to charge impact fees allows us to charge a maximum of 1% of the value of a project. That's the most we can charge. Now, the way our ordinance is written, like for a residential, a single family, it states we will charge $4,184 impact fee for every house. I can't do that for a $250,000 house, because $2,500 is 1%. That's the max I can charge. So, you know, the max we can do is 1%. The way that the fees are done in the ordinance now, in the fee schedule, I rarely can charge the fees that are listed in here, because I hit the 1% max first. So it's something simpler from my end, and how, you know, the mayor and council want to choose to allocate that money is, you know, based on what the law allows you to do. My goal, if we redo the ordinance, is to have something that's simpler to calculate and enforce. Instead of having something that says you shall charge this amount, you can charge 1%. Basically, the way it works, we can charge $4,184, which is 1% of a $418,000 house. Someone builds a $2 million home, they will get charged 1% of $418,000. That's the most the ordinance allows me to charge. Now, when you're assessing impact fees, it actually, you have to calculate what is the impact. So a $2 million home may not necessarily have more impact than a $400,000 house. You may have five bedrooms in both houses. You may have the same number of occupants. We just need, I would like to clear that up, and then have, you know, the mayor and council decide how you want to allocate that money.
I think it's important also to mention that, let me see here, the city's current impact fee structure could be vulnerable to legal challenge, because it's so outdated. So it really should be done every four years.
So we can't add, I mean, we cannot increase that percentage of what we charge by 1%?
Beyond 1%.
So the study is just to determine how to reallocate?
It's absolutely, it has to be reallocated.
And we can't just, I guess, collectively decide?
No, it has to be based on...
Okay. It has to be based on a study?
Yeah, it would take probably three months to do.
It's a very in-depth study. They do a lot of demographics all over the city and determine how many miles a day residents drive. It's based on a lot of...
When did you say the last one we had done was?
10 years ago.
So were those allocations done based on the last study? I mean, it was, it's scientific, you do a study, and then you set those fees? Or you set the allocations based on that study?
They set the allocations.
That's pretty much cut and dry?
Right. And the company, I guess, the firm that does it, is a company that came down here before 2007 and presented in a summit to all municipalities. And pretty much all municipalities use this group, because they do impact fee studies for municipalities all over the country. So they're pretty much, I guess, the selection that everybody uses.
Is that reallocation study just for residential? You can choose, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, it's not. Do you have a copy of the study in there?
I do.
It's very detailed.
Aren't we required, I mean, isn't there state law, state statute, that regulates how we can spend impact fees, though?
Yes. But we have narrowed it from that. In other words, there are things, we're really missing out on a lot of opportunity to pay for things that we could do right now. There are years that go by that departments can't use any of the funds, because it's so narrow. And that, we've put on ourselves. We really need to broaden it, you know, based on our needs.
Give me an idea, mayor, what do we, we have four, we have four categories for residential allocations, and three for commercial. Are we talking, numbers need to be moved that much? Or are we talking about there's another four or five categories that we're not even addressing?
Well, there are more categories.
The main category that we're not addressing, and the city's ordinance that is different than the state law, is drainage and...
Well, I mean, they say that schools have to be city school, I mean, city-owned, but based on the statute that I read, you know, that probably needs to be looked at. I think that we can definitely use it for more than what we're using it for, but the four that it's...
It says you can use it for ambulance services. The city does not own an ambulance service. It has to be used for city-owned services. So you could use it for ambulances, services, and schools. The city doesn't own either one of those. It could be used for drainage improvements and those kind of things. And 10 years ago, when the money was allocated, percentages out, they chose not to put any on drainage improvements.
But I think that, you know, schools and drainage, and the four important ones that we already give money, I mean, that we allocate money for, all of that can be looked at again, just to make sure.
Eric, you mentioned the number 4184 twice.
Yes, sir.
Is it, but 4184 is more than 1% of, say, a $250,000 home? Is the limit 4184 or 1%?
1%. By state law, I cannot charge more than 1%.
But we've put a cap of 4184.
We put that in.
We can lift that.
That's ours.
So a $750,000 house, it would be $7,500.
It'd be 4184.
It's 4184.
Unless we change the local ordinance.
We've got a maximum of 1%.
That's correct.
Or 40, I'm sorry, we've got a maximum of 4184.
4184, period. Correct.
Which obviously can be changed.
So we need to look at the ordinance and instituting a study. Will the study come back and say that we do need to have a cap that's less than 1%?
Not necessarily.
On a large, like a $2 million house?
Not necessarily.
You just have to manually calculate and show that?
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Because actually, you know, like another example, for a commercial building, it gives a price per square footage. It says you will charge $7,700 impact fee for a commercial building per thousand square feet under 10,000. So I don't reach that number. When you calculate, you give me a 5,000-square-foot building, that's 75,000 plus, or excuse me, 35,000 plus in impact fees. That's generally, that's 1, 3.5 million. That building's not going to be worth that much. So instead of collecting what the numbers the ordinance gives us, I always, almost always have to stop at the 1%, because that's as far as I can go. Does that make sense? Yeah?
I would suggest that when this Tischler buys, is the people, is the professional services provider, that do these studies all over the south and the country, I think we should ask them for their opinion about uses for that money, because I think this was so new to Baldwin County. There's only Baldwin County, is there another county?
I don't think there is. I think actually, it's the only one.
Baldwin County's the only county in the state that gets to collect this money. So I think that...
That gets to collect?
That gets to.
That's in the state. It's in our state, it's just for the Baldwin County.
Yeah.
The law for Baldwin County was created.
And it's not the county, it's just the municipalities within the county. Baldwin County itself...
Wait, say that again. There's other counties around the state that collect impact fees.
Well, not under this state statute.
Not under this state statute.
They collect tap fees and impact fees.
No, they collect impact fees. There's been lawsuits about impact fee use around the state, because cities have misused that impact fee for other issues than whether it's collected for.
The enabling legislation we used was, it was written by, at the time, Representative Byrne, and he, it was specific to Baldwin County. There may be other local, for Jefferson or Shelby or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
There's other counties with impact fees.
The second part of your statement that you made, I believe that we need to pay particular attention to what this company says, exactly what we can use and cannot use the money for.
Right. Because of, I would imagine, that kind of litigation that's occurred elsewhere.
Yeah, that's what I think. We don't need to be, we don't need to get caught up in using it just because we think it's a good use of the money. It needs to be stated what the use of the money is.
Right. And that 4150 max, I'm guessing they did an average of what the, you know, the permit number was pulled for those houses, instead of saying, we're gonna let you do 1% on a 3 million, you know, why does a $3 million house necessarily didn't have more of an impact than a $250,000 house, if it's got the same number of bathrooms and one kitchen? So why are we gonna charge more for this house, if it's not having any more impact on infrastructure than this other house? So they probably hit that average range of permit values pulled over a certain year period, and that's how they came up with that 4150.
This study emphasizes what the impact for those houses are on other city services, like parks, and transportation, and roads, and police, and fire. So it's not just on utilities that it would estimate what the impact is. It's streets, and it goes in here in specifics and says, how many miles a day does that four-person family drive? It gets down into the details of that.
What that study cost, do we know?
Well, I called, and they said that the study would, this year, cost around 50 or 60. I think that's what it cost last time.
It was around 50 last time, I think.
But it can be paid out of the impact fee balance.
Can we find out from the state what we can spend impact fee money on, and determine as a collective body?
Well, that's the thing, is there's two different things here. The company that we are hiring is going to do the study on all of this, but the state statute is what dictates what we can do with the money. And we also can go over what our priorities are, you know. But with police, for example, and I don't know what the study would come back and say, but with police, they're very shorthanded. We should have a lot more police per capita. You're supposed to have so many police per thousand in population, of course. Our police jurisdiction exceeds the city limits. So when we add a person, and they need a car, for instance, that's a new purchase, and it's adding to something, not replacing, those kinds of things can be paid for, but police only gets the least amount out of all of this. So, anyway, it's definitely something we need to do.
It needs to be looked at, because, you know, you're talking about probably researching permit values and construction values. That was also done in 2007. That was kind of the beginning of the downturn. Construction values were down. I think if we look at it now, 10 years later, a lot of those numbers are gonna change. You know, per square foot prices are much higher. At the time, we weren't doing 500 new residences a year in terms of permitting. And this also, we can only collect this fee on properties within the corporate limits. Even though we issue permits in the jurisdiction, we cannot collect impact fees on anything outside the city limits. Now, the majority of our subdivisions are in the city limits, so we get a good bit of it. We get a lot from it, but it's only in the city limits.
Is that by ordinance or state statute?
That's by state statute.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
County can collect it, and they can share it with the municipality if they...
County can't collect. Per our, per our, I don't think during...
State statute, county can collect. Yeah. County can collect, and they can share it with the city if they wish to, but I doubt that's gonna happen.
Does the county currently collect?
Zero.
They don't, yeah.
But they can.
But they will still limit and reduce what we get for schools.
Sure.
I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah. Say that again?
The county, you know, for the penny tax, they switched the percentage, you know, it was 5% to Faulkner, 55% to Baldwin County Schools, and then 40% to streets or roads. And they had Baldwin County Board of Education agree to swap that percentage. So Baldwin County Board of Education got 40, and they got 55. I'm like, you can make up money for streets by doing an impact fee, because we need more money for our schools, not less.
Sure, absolutely.
Mayor, so am I to assume you're gonna, you want to put this in the budget for...
Yes, it's in the budget, but, yeah, that'll be presented again. It's in the impact fee balance that we already have.
Well, council, since we won't have an opportunity to discuss it necessarily before we receive the budget in a public meeting and together, I don't know. It sounds like a pretty good idea to me, that we need to move forward with the study. If it hasn't been done in that long, we're probably leaving a lot of money, I would say, probably pay for it.
Well, our ordinance, our ordinance actually says we are to review the impact fee ordinance, and I think it says every three to four years. And it hasn't been done since the ordinance was done 10 years ago.
Well, I kind of think in a way, Eric, it really gets reviewed, not the ordinance itself, but the impact fee fund gets reviewed every year when the budget...
Your biggest point is that when the first one was done in '07, the downturn, as opposed to now.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's a different animal, yeah.
It's a whole, I mean, it's a different world out there now.
Right. And I do think there was a good percentage allocated to Parks and Rec, because there were several large parks projects listed that this money helped pay for. So I haven't, I don't have any documentation in the file while drainage improvements were not included on that separation at all. But, I mean, I think that's the reason why you can see so much of the percentage heading to one direction, is because they were trying to provide money to pay for parks. And this study will tell you that you have to have so many parks for every resident. And, you know, it's just, it's just scientific data in there, the way they...
Now, is that study, that's binding, that study's binding?
No, it's not binding.
It's just something advisory type?
It was in the, yes. And when they did this 10 years ago, they came and presented the whole study to the council and to the public, so that everybody could see where all the data came from and what their suggestions were.
Yeah. I'm not totally sold on every three or four years, but definitely 10 years seems like been a while.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any comments or questions, Eric or Deborah or the mayor? Anybody have any real resistance to it or anything?
I think it sounds like a good idea.
I don't know what kind of good information we're gonna get out of it personally. I mean, to spend $50,000, and we know if we can agree that drainage is a major issue, find out by state statute that we can fund drainage issues through the impact fee.
But you actually can't come up with these percentages on your own, though. You have to have a study to back up, back it up. Otherwise, you're opening yourself up to liability.
Gotcha.
So it's, we kind of have to do it.
Fair enough.
Do we do the ordinance after, after, implement the study first, and then update the ordinance?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. All right. Tree-like discussion. Joe?
Joan and Richard, if you see.
Joan and Richard, okay.
Richard, if you're here.
He's here. He's just doling.
Oh, I never, I always see him last. I need to...
I think you need a bigger fan.
I wanted to ask first if you heard back about the local...
No, I'm not.
Is Tut here?
I'm right here.
Okay. Did you get the email about the, the local company bidding? Okay.
Yes. And I talked to Ken about that quite a while ago.
What, Tut, why don't you come up here, so we can get you, you know, on the public record? And I think it's, it's important to hear, you know, I want to ask, you know, I want to, I want to hear what you have to say about this as well. Why don't you, mayor, do you want to do that, or someone else here?
Well, Richard, I think...
Kind of talk about what happened in the bid process, and what, just to kind of lay groundwork for what you're about to bring up.
Yes.
Well, there are a couple of things that happened in the bid process. The first issue came from whether or not the contractor needed to be a licensed contractor in the state of Alabama to perform that work. And it was determined that they would be. And then, when we received bids the first time, no contractor responded to the bid request. And then we went back to the state licensing board, reiterated what this project was about, and that it's really not building or erecting anything. It's really about hanging lights and trees, and it's more repetitive, and it doesn't require any special work to do that. And they agreed that the person wouldn't need to have a license to do that work. So we rebid it. And we had two prices come in on the rebid. One was the local electrician, Bayshore Electric, and the other was Winterland. And Bayshore Electric was the low bid by $8, $9,000. And then, as we were preparing to put the award recommendation together, it was then determined that a former employee of Fairhope, who works with Bayshore, caused that to become an issue with the revolving door policy of the ethics law. And I looked through the ethics law, and in particular, how an employee that didn't really assume a position of responsibility or authority was exempt, or should be exempt because of the competitive bid law, which I think is just as important of a law as any other law might be. And if they meet the requirements of the competitive bid law, and even in the ethics law, there's provisions for contracts to be awarded to individuals who work for a city or a government entity, if they meet all the requirements of a bid law. And I just don't see how you can extend where somebody who used to work for a city wouldn't apply that same level of logic. And if they meet the requirements of the competitive bid law, they should be able to have the project awarded to them, in my opinion.
Richard, you said a position of authority.
Right.
Now, just so you know, what I was told, now, I could be wrong.
Right.
This is what I was told, that the company is owned 50/50 by the two brothers.
Correct.
One of which left the city several years ago, three years ago or so, four, I don't know.
Right.
And the other one, less than two years ago.
Right.
So how can one of the owners of the company not be considered a position of authority?
No, the position of authority is his position while he was working at Fairhope.
Oh. So, Richard, are you saying then, that in your opinion, we could have awarded it to them?
I'm saying that's how I would interpret it.
Okay. Do you interpret it differently?
Well, yeah. Ken and I, Ken Watson and I have talked about this a lot, today and Friday. And you have two approaches to this thing. One is the approach that Richard just talked about, which we're not excluding at this point totally. But if we had to make a choice today, we would have to go the other approach. Now, the reason I say that is because I am suggesting one of the decisions the council could make tonight is to delay this two more weeks. Both Ken and I have called the Ethics Commission, trying to talk to the people up there about this. This is sort of a first impression, but there's two sections of the ethics law that are coming into play here. One of them is 36-25-13C. And that says, no public employee shall represent a client, including his or her employer, before, in, before the city, any department, or so-and-so with the city, for a period of two years after they leave employment with the city. Now, I took it that that section applied, because the way I understand the facts is that Ben Patterson did leave the city about a year ago, and that he participated in the pre-bid process, attending meetings on behalf of the company. So based on those facts, as I understand them, I felt that 36-25-13 applied, and that it would taint the bid process and taint the bid, because it seems like it is a violation of this section. He has only left for a year, not two years. He represented his employer, and it's either his company 50/50 or his brother's company. I'm not sure about that. And then, it was before the electric department, where he worked for electrical work, it wasn't before the electrical department, it was in the bid process, but it's where he worked in an area that he did work, which is the electrical service area of our, of our city. So based on that, I was concerned that we were in a situation here where we would be violating this section of the, of the ethics law. But however, what Richard says is also well-taken to a point, and that's why Ken and I were thinking, if we can have a couple of weeks on this, we may be able to make some more progress. 36-25-11 allows a current public employee to participate in a bid process, and if they are awarded the low bid, they can still get the contract, even as a present employee, but the contract has to be immediately sent to the Ethics Commission, within 10 days of award, has to be sent to the Ethics Commission with an explanation, and the copy of the contract being sent. But what Richard's point is that if a current employee can participate in a bid process, and if he gives the low bid, he can still get the contract, with this one caveat, you send it to the Ethics Commission. It doesn't seem reasonable that a prior employee would be excluded. But if you just read the language, the language says what it says, and the language of 13C does say, no public employee shall serve as a representative of the employer in any area in which he was prior, in which he worked for the city, unless he's been gone for two years. So the question is, does that taint the bid to the point that the city could not accept the bid without having, and who would be violating the ethics law at this point? Would it be the city, or would it be the company, or would it be the individual? But, and then the other question that Ken and I don't know the answer to, and if we have a little more time, we might be able to get an answer, is, does the fact that it went through the bidding process clear the taint of the, this 13C off of it and clean it, so that now it's okay to go forward? And those are the questions that we wanted to ask the president of the Ethics Commission, or the CEO of the Ethics Commission, and the Hugh Evans, the general counsel. We called them today and couldn't get, we couldn't talk to them today.
I'd like to add just one thing. What were you reading when you said the different positions that it would apply to?
Now, which...
I don't know, I'm not as organized a study as I can break up.
Well, we were talking about it originally, and called Ken, but...
Yeah, the section that's... Yeah, the section that said something about a position, not coming from a position of authority with the city.
Right.
Yeah, it was purchasing agent, a decision maker, I'm guessing council mayor. That kind of a level of position in the city.
Yeah. Well, this thirteen C that I was referring to doesn't say anything about a position of authority. It just says, no public employee shall represent a client before a city board, agency, commissioner, department of which he or she is a former employee or worked pursuant to an arrangement, uh, for a period of two years after he or she leaves such employment or working arrangement.
And I think that's relating to more as a lobbyist or as creating a consulting fee that really isn't part of a competitive bid situation. I, I think that if, if this con, if this guy came in and said, hey, look, y'all need any little electrical work done and it's under the fifteen thousand dollar service, so just let us do it for you. We'll be happy. You know me, I'm, you know, I'm capable of doing it. I think that's kind of what i- is referenced in that, in my mind.
Yeah, keeping them from having some competitive advantage.
Yes.
Now, if we have time.
That's exactly right.
That's what it's for.
Right now, both Ken and I today sort of came to the conclusion that if we had some time, we may be able to feel clean about that and that Richard is correct. But as we sit here right now tonight, reading the plain language of thirteen C, I don't feel, and neither does Ken feel, uh, that we can in good faith give advice to the client to go ahead and do this.
Well, you got, it sounds like conflicting, uh, sections there. My question then would be to Joe. Joe, when do we normally start stringing the lights upon the trees?
Last week.
Last week? Okay. So my question would be, if we're farming this out to somebody else that's going to be able to do it full-time without taking away from our current employee's schedule?
I need to add to that.
How, can we do it? Would it, would it trouble us to do it, start, you know, if we postpone this two weeks?
Winterland can only do it if it starts now. And I don't know if we've even called them since this. But they have already, they're booked up. They'll come in and do the whole thing in two weeks. But they are booked up for the rest of the year. I'm not sure exactly what date, but we don't have time to wait for that.
Where, where is Winterland from?
Where do they?
I think Indiana or Illinois or someplace like that.
This, this is the company that does, this is all they do. They, they come into municipalities and large-scale Christmas events, like doll and gra, and then they come in and just do the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, just thinking out loud here on this, I mean, obviously, I think we'd all agree, if we could have somebody that could, that's local to do it, that'd be great because if something happens to them.
And they did beat Winterland.
They need, there's issues, I mean, because my question would be if Winterland comes up and puts them up in two weeks and then goes back to Indiana, what happens if there's a problem with the lights? They need to be fixed. They need to be worked on. Does that become our responsibility then?
They maintain it.
But if we hired local guys, then they're here, they could fix it.
You know, one of, one of the things that, that we're saying, and when I say we, I'm talking about Ken and I, is that as we sit here tonight, we don't feel confident that we can give you an opinion that this is squeaky clean.
Right.
But, and also I will say this, and Ken and I both talked about this. In this type of situation where you're just not sure, I have always found it safer to err on the side of a caution rather than to take the leap and risk. But in, but we could be, Ken and I could be erring on the side of caution.
What, what about voting on it with the stipulation that you confirm? The only reason I say this is because the only option, if you wait two more weeks, would be to do the local.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And I don't think it's going to take two weeks to find that out, would it?
I think the council has a lot, a lot, a lot more questions to ask.
Yeah, I'm still not sold on us not doing it with the electric department and the public works department and just general utilities. Open it up to everybody, but they're not going to require a G C on it. So what are, what are the quotes anyways that we've received? What are the?
It's lower and less expensive than us doing it.
Well, but it doesn't cost us that much to do it.
Well, um, it was, it was a hundred and fifty-seven before we had to go back.
That is equipment though.
All right, all right.
Lifts, stuff like that.
Who, who wants to speak now? Mayor, do you want to speak?
Um, well, I, I will say that it costs that department and labor a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's before we came back, ordered more lights and they did more. So I don't know exactly what that was, but I would say it's safe to say a hundred and sixty-seven minimum. But the real cost is not the labor. It's the electric department not being able to do their job for three months. And that maintenance, I mean, if you've mentioned it, Joe has been here and knows it. That's the most important thing and which is why I said it's so important for us to find a better way for the city. Because leaving all of this maintenance for three, three months is not prudent. And I want them to be able to do their job. And we're not hiring a bunch more people to do that maintenance while they do the streetlights. I mean, I mean, the, the tree lights. So we, we definitely want to go with a contract labor. Winterland, I think if you go with them, I think that's what's on the agenda, then they'd have to start right away. If you go with the lower bid, then I think they can start, they have between now and when the?
November.
Middle of November.
Exactly. And they're not doing other things. They would finish it, I would think, but.
Let's give everybody a chance. Jake?
Yeah, here, here's my other couple of questions I have. I, I don't, I, I understand that there are a lot of things that, infrastructure needs that we have that need to be addressed. And I, and I, and I don't believe that the electric department has extra men or extra time, at least with the current infrastructure needs to, to do this. I mean, I think they can do it, but I, I, I think there are probably better uses of their time. And if we are, if we have quotes that are within reason to, to what we expect, that it would. But, but my concern would be, or maybe, you know, my concern would be this. I, I have a hard time believing that there aren't some employees in Fairhope that, that like to do the tree lighting, that, that want that overtime. Maybe, maybe there are guys in the landscaping department. Maybe there are guys in, in maintenance. I don't know. That either count on or look forward to the opportunity to have that overtime. And so I don't know if there's a way that we can let some of our own guys that want that overtime for, for the extra money during the holidays, to let them participate in this and maybe supplement whatever contractor we use. I don't know how you do that sign-up sheet at the warehouse, the guys that, that want them, maybe want that overtime if it's available. But I just wouldn't want us to, to leave out our own guys if they truly wanted that extra work.
I did forget the other expenses, the equipment.
Right, which is a massive expense.
Well, we'll get to that.
What is that?
The equipment is also not, not in these figures that I built.
We're going to, we're going to get to that.
But, but that would be, so that's one issue. I mean, I don't want us to leave any of our own guys out if they, if they do want that. If nobody wants it, then, then that's, I understand that too.
Well, I think you'll find the rest of the departments are kind of like the electric department. They've got a lot to do and very little time and resource to get it done with.
Sure. But, but if I'm talking about guys that are, would be doing it on an overtime basis, guys that had just worked a shift that want to come spend four hours to put lights up for that extra, for that extra money for Christmas vacations, whatever. I'd rather give it to our own guys if they want it before I give it to somebody else. But also don't want to spend a lot of time doing that, that we need to be doing other things. But I also really like tree lighting and want it to be as good as it always is. But, um, and then I kind of asked my other question, which is, you know, if, if we do hire somebody from out of town and things go wrong, what is their availability to fix it? Does that become our responsibility? And I think those are probably things that we'd have to address when they happen, but be a concern I have at this point. I'd always rather go local if we can, but until we, you know, I understand you tell, you're not saying we can't do it, but you're not saying that you, you feel comfortable enough saying we can yet at this point.
That's right.
So my question then would be this, if we say tonight, let's wait on the local guys.
Then we have to use the local guys.
Victory Land, and then what if they answer in two weeks?
Winterland, it's not Victory Land. Victory Land is not coming to Fairhope.
So the bingo machines are not coming down here to put the lights up. All right. I'll figure that out in a second.
But they light up and make noise.
We got, we got one more, one more council.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You mentioned a hundred and fifty-seven thousand then with the new lights.
No, it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand just for the labor in two thousand sixteen. And then we, they went out and hung, bought more lights and there was additional labor. So I'm guessing it was about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. But the other expense is the equipment and, which would not have to be used for tree lighting. And I'm not sure if we have a figure on that.
And the bid included the removal of the lights.
That was a question I had.
And if Winterland, maybe not this year.
I suppose about a third of that one fifty-seven added back to the one fifty-seven for, for, for us to do it.
So I want you to make sure I understand this. The one fifty says just to put them up, not to take them down.
Well, on my, my spreadsheet, it was for both.
Nope, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
So it's for both?
It's for both.
Yeah, and again, uh, my only big deal in this is the fact that I've always said and I truly believe the fact that the lights have to be hung because the money's there for people come here throughout four or five months that they're here, so there's no doubt about it. And I really, it's not an interest to me one way or the other, but I would hate, who's supervising this crowd? We have someone of our guys there to supervise and make sure those lights are hung right, because I don't want what we had last year. I said that one hour record last year, saying, we're going to do that, but that's just don't happen. There's no sense of doing it halfway and not doing it. And then when they're back in Indiana and it's not done properly, what do you do then? And we got to go put them back up.
I will say with Winterland, they've been doing this for thirty years. And so they're real, I mean.
I understand that. I understand.
I'm not sure who talked to them, but they're.
We have, we have fifteen thousand strands in the warehouse waiting.
And, and one of the things they offer, maybe not to consider for this year, but they do offer, um, tree lights that can be maintained throughout the year, uh, that will last three years. So it's definitely something for us to consider next year because then you wouldn't have this type of cost that we're talking about for two years, except for the maintenance cost.
You say they have lights. We have them?
Winterland, yeah, Winterland.
They're going to provide the lights also?
Well, Winterland is, this, it's a company that decorates city area. But since they've been doing it so long, they now, uh, create, distribute and sell their decorations, which is how I even found them, uh, because they were at Gift Market. And so they use that lighting and the L E D, I think you probably understand it better than I do. But the wiring is meant to be.
It's a heavier gauge wiring that lasts longer.
I thought the ones that we bought are supposed to last like three or four years.
I know they haven't been lasting three or four years, but I thought that they were supposed to last.
I think they're rated like ninety days exterior and we wind up using them for considerably longer amount of time than that. Yeah.
Yeah, this is serious.
As you said, we've got fifteen thousand strands ready to go.
Okay.
It's not going to be much effect for this year because we've got to use them. We already bought and paid for them.
Right, yes.
So we have to use those.
Right.
Any other comments? Rob?
I'm along the lines of Jay and Kevin.
Okay, Jimmy?
I'd just say that I did visit with, uh, with Richard and Joe a couple of weeks ago and I understand the strain it puts on the electric department, but Jay hit the nail on the head with exactly what I was thinking of. We had some kind of, uh, capacity to open it up to folks with, within the city who were interested in earning overtime. And I know, you know, the cost roughly a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for labor to put it up, we're not going to save a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars if we farm this out to someone else. Because we're still going to have that, all of that salary expense is still on the city outside of overtime. The overtime wasn't a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
No, no, but most of it was. But, and like I said, this does not include the expense of the equipment and the expense of putting things off. That, that you're really only looking at one cost and that's labor. I do hate that we're, we're looking at, there, it's apples and oranges. I mean, it's labor, it's inefficiency, it's equipment. And it's the fact that, I mean, the electric department didn't sign up to do tree lights. I mean, this has been an ongoing thing that's really needed to be addressed for a long time. And, and asking others, uh, to do it from other departments, again, it's not like we're fully staffed in any department. You know, we're, we're asking for needs in each department for this budget, but it's still not going to bring us up to where we probably need to be based on our growth. So anytime you're pulling employees from other departments, whether or not you're giving them overtime or not, there's liability, you know? The electric department's very used to being in the buckets. And, um, I just don't think we should put any city employee up in a bucket and say, good luck with that. Now remember, you got to wrap it this way. I mean, it's just, you know, I, I think it's a bad idea.
Anything else, Jimmy?
Jack, I do have one thing.
Go ahead.
Uh, the Winterland, what, what hours are they going to put the lights up? Same hours the city typically does?
They would do it in two weeks, so they would just come in and do it.
I guess that's part of my point is the ineffi, well, is it at night or is it, you know, they're going to block off a section of the road and then do?
During the day.
During the day?
Right.
Well, that's part of the inefficiency of the city, right? They go out there and do it at night and then they break down at nine or 10 o'clock in the morning and have to go back and redo their trucks.
Six to 10 in the morning, six to 10 at night.
So, I mean, under those same scenarios, if you, if you blocked off, say, one half of a block and did all those tree lights down that side, it's going to inconvenience those merchants for that time period. But if you kept going instead of going back to the warehouse and unloading the truck, putting what you need on there and go work three hours to put in transformer or whatever. What I'm saying is cut down on that repetitive unloading and offloading of the truck and just tell the merchants, this is going to be a little bit of inconvenience for two weeks while we block off half the street at a time, put the lights up.
Joe, I have some questions. You said that we typically would have started last week. I just don't remember that starting in the first weekend in September and then going all the way till the end of November. I could be wrong, so.
It has been.
And that's been, and how many hours a day? Do you say four hours a day they spend?
We work from six to 10 in the morning, so that's one hour overtime, three hours straight time in the morning and six to 10 at night, which is four hours overtime at night. Monday through Thursday. We wouldn't decorate on Fridays because of the mess it would make on the sidewalks and streets for the weekend to keep, you know, help public works try to keep the sidewalks and streets clean.
But a lot of the, the, the lighting of the tra, I mean, the, the wrapping is done up until November when we start getting busy downtown. September is the slowest month of the year in downtown. It's the slowest month. So, you know, that would be a good time to do it.
So Mayor, I, I hear what you're saying about putting maybe people that aren't used to being in buckets up in buckets. And to, to address the equipment concern, uh, I would not envision using the bucket trucks, but I would envision renting a man lift, which I think is not very expensive. Now, we can, uh, you can have the self-propelled, which are pretty expensive, or the, the tow behind would probably be adequate for this job. So that doesn't concern me. Once again, though, it does concern me putting people in there that aren't qualified. I just, going back to what a few other councils in the world have said though, is I wish we could find a way. I, I don't want to take electoral department resources. I hate saying this in front of all the other employees, but you're, you're highly compensated compared to some other departments and that's a, that's a, a big expense. If we could find, I wish we could find a way. We have three hundred employees.
Well, are there enough supervisors out in the audience to ask and see if they have a sense for how many of their employees would want to do that?
I'm just wondering. Yeah, I mean, what, how many, I'm trying to get to that. How many, like, what size crew does this on a typical day?
Five bucket trucks and five guys on the ground. So.
From first weekend in September until November?
Correct.
So is that ten, ten guys working, working eight hours a day?
Correct. It's all hands-on deck.
Honestly, I, I thought that when we could show that we would save money by contracting it out, that we wouldn't even be having a back and forth as to who would do it. But, you know, we are going to have to get some more answers with the ethics. But I can think the most important thing is that the city employees are under my direction. And I don't want them doing this because I want them doing their job. So that's really what you need to take to heart, is I want city employees doing their jobs. And if Joe wants to help oversee this, because he's been there, done that, I think that would be great. But it's, it's, it's really important that these departments have time to accomplish their goals.
Let me ask one more question. If we, let's say we spend a hundred and forty-seven thousand. I'm sorry. We spend a hundred and forty-seven thousand on the. We spent a hundred forty-seven thousand on the, uh, subletting of these contracts, do we take, I mean, is that part of the budget to save money? We're gonna take a hundred forty-seven thousand out of your budget? In order to save money? Or are we gonna still spend the same amount of money in your budget as it was last year, plus an additional hundred forty-seven thousand for the contract?
How much is the equipment?
The equipment usage?
Right.
On that spreadsheet that I created?
Oh, I mean, I probably didn't, I'll, I'll find it.
Again, I didn't get an answer to my, to my question. In the budget, are we taking a hundred forty-seven out in order to save money, or are we gonna, is that gonna be an additional hundred forty-seven that we have to add to the budget? Because everybody's talking about saving money.
You're gonna deduct most of the overtime.
If you're gonna add a hundred forty-seven thousand, you're not saving any money. You're adding a hundred forty-seven thousand.
You're gonna deduct most of the overtime.
From the budget.
Yeah, and, and depending on what consequences come from lack of maintenance, you may spend a lot more money fixing something that you might not have had to fix under an emergency situation.
So the money with budget?
Well, that, that's a risk anytime, no matter what work it is.
I know.
So Richard, you're saying that money was budgeted this, this year? Those hours were put in the budget? You said we're gonna deduct it from the budget, but those hours were put in this year's budget?
I'm saying you can deduct the overtime that is part of that one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. I don't know how much that is.
I don't know that it was put in the budget.
I don't, I don't, I'm not, not necessarily opposed to it, but I, I don't think it was in there.
It's not in the budget.
I think it's gonna be additional, is the answer, to be honest.
Well, and again, what.
But I'm saying if we're not paying overtime, the budget numbers that you may be looking at that include the overtime will not equal that amount at the end of the year, whatever that overtime amount is.
And you're saying by not, by not having these guys out there stringing the trees, they might be able to prevent some other issue that causes overtime and causes some future problems?
Well, anytime you use equipment.
Sure.
You run, you run into that, and every time you use it, it's for future, you know, you may have a problem in the future because it's hours on the equipment. I mean, that's part of, of having the equipment to begin with.
I agree.
I don't, I don't put much emphasis on that as much as I do, uh, if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna talk about saving money, we're gonna save money, aren't we? And what it sounds like to me is a test.
But you can say that if you get into a proactive habit of maintenance, then you lower the risk of reactive issues that come from lack of maintenance. Can you agree to that?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. I can't define it, and I can't quantify it, but that's what I'm talking about.
Y'all got any more final questions or comments? It's on the agenda tonight, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss it again on the, on the agenda.
That discussion will be if we use that, which one we use?
Well, that's gonna have to be discussed.
I think one of the things you could consider would be if you decide to approve the, uh, the bid with the local vendor, you could put it conditional on, uh, what the Ethics Commission, you know, guidance comes back with.
Still doesn't help us if they say, come back and say you can't, but.
And, and I hate to ask the question, but if we go with the local vendor, which I would much prefer, how much are we gonna spend in attorney's fees trying to sort the amount of money we're saving?
The gap on that.
Spending attorney's fees to sort it out?
The savings is nine thousand.
I know, we're gonna spend eight thousand trying to sort that out.
Well, the question is, though, if, uh, the ethics come back and said that we should've allowed that bid, then the low, and we award it to Winterland, is it Winterland or?
It's, it's Winterland, but I don't know why they're on the bitchy, I mean, they're, they're on the bid list.
Yeah.
And honestly, I think the fact that they're on the bid list and we've opened it up to them, I think that, that is something they can come back and say, "Why aren't you letting us have this?"
It just doesn't make any sense that a current employee could bid, but a former employee could not.
Doesn't make any sense.
I mean, I mean, and, and let me.
I agree with that, but the, but the, but the section says what it says.
But does, but let me ask you this, does that section that says an employee can't participate within two years of being an employee, does it say they can't participate in the bidding of work, or they can't?
No, it says they cannot represent their employer before the city, uh, agency or department.
See, I think, I think that's a different thing.
And it starts out as a lobbyist.
Yeah, I, I think that's a different thing then, I mean, because I think if you're, because if it doesn't say bid, this was a bidding process, this wasn't somebody coming to us and us just saying, "Yeah, we're gonna give it to you because we know who you are."
That's right.
I think that's designed to prevent that.
And the former, the former employer, I mean, the former employee represented the employer in that process.
Yeah, so it's, it's confusing. But, but I think, I think the intent was to prevent what Richard was talking about, which was just sort of self-dealing among buddies.
And being competitive.
When a bid is a closed bidding process that prevent, that, that really helps prevent stuff like that from that.
And that may well be correct. I'm not saying that's not correct. I'm saying right now, I didn't feel comfortable, and Ken Watson didn't feel comfortable, giving the city the advice to go ahead and, and, you know.
And, and I think you're, I think you're right. I think there's some ambiguities between the two that, that create an issue that we need to figure out, but I think my interpretation of it would be, and I'd hope the ethics would agree.
But how did they get on the bid list?
Yeah.
You know, I had some indication that they were excluded, but.
Yep, they were on the bid li-, they were qualified on the bid list. Of course, it went out to everybody that was qualified on the bid list. That's, again, um, there's just too many things.
Yeah, there were close to thirty different contractors that were on this list that we sent the invitation to bids to, to have an opportunity to bid it.
Jay, then, you know, the, the question is, though, is if you, if you award it to the low bidder, thinking that the Ethics Commission may rule in their favor, and they don't, you've missed Winterland.
I, I know, I, I don't.
And if you give it to Winterland, and they get a, a positive opinion from the Ethics Commission, and you've already awarded it to Winterland, they're gonna come back and potentially sue you and say, "We were the low bidder and we weren't awarded the bid."
Well, Mayor, let me ask you this. I, I mean, assuming we could get an answer sooner than two weeks, I mean, if we, and I'm not saying we, we would, but I mean, assuming we could call a special meeting in a week if we found the answer out, would that, would that be enough time for Winterland to come?
I just think because of the fact that we're so close now to, to getting it started, maybe consider doing, um.
Now, one caveat, pardon me, Mayor, one caveat we added to the bid process, we put, we added all of that, uh, the hundred and forty-something trees into divisions of height, so we have unit prices on every tree. And we did put a caveat in there that we would pay based on the number of trees they decorated, and if it got toward the demarcation line of June fifteenth or whatever, or November, that we may help finish the job with our, with our people. We did add that in the, as a qualification to the proposal.
Well, with that, though, it's like an unit price, every tree they don't do.
Yes.
We don't get paid for it.
That's correct.
Yes, this is, this is more like a, it's not a, it's not a definitive a hundred and forty-seven thousand, it's really a.
If they do every tree, if they do every tree, it'll be a hundred and forty, well, it'll be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand if we're awarded.
And then they take it down. Part of that's taken away.
I got, you know, my problem's bigger with the legal issues. It's like you, you're gonna get popped no matter what you do, depending on what this decision is. It'd be real nice if we could.
Welcome to Fairhope, right?
If we could wait and find out what a definitive answer is.
I'm hoping that maybe within the next couple of days, we'll get some feedback from the Ethics Commission.
So, so we.
I'm hoping, I can't guarantee that.
And assuming we were to vote tonight and approve the low bidder conditionally based upon the ethics opinion, and in three days, they come back and say, "You know what? You can't actually hire them." If we wanted to, could we come back and still get Winterland to do it?
We'd have to find out.
We can find out.
And I could do that while.
I mean, I think we, I mean, if, if their bid is legit, I think we do have to take the low bidder, if it's a properly submitted bid.
I agree, that's right. The deal is, if you can't, we go back to work, do it like we've done for the last twenty years.
But if, if, if we come back and it was.
Give it a go next year.
You've given it to Winterland.
I mean, it's not like it won't get done.
Violated so much you there to. Yeah, I think, I think we are ethically obligated to take the lowest competent bid, assuming they meet, they've met all the qualifications.
That's right.
So I think, I think we have an obligation, since we're unsure, I think we have an obligation tonight to approve conditionally the low bidder.
Yeah.
Depending on the outcome of it.
Condition upon, uh, if it gets a clearance.
Yeah.
I think that's a reasonable approach.
I mean, that, that way, we're not, we're not missing anything on that. That's my thought on it.
All right, let's, uh, save this fun discussion for debating during the council meeting so we can move on. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads that need to make a report to the council? If you've come up. Anyone have anything? Eric? What's that? Uh, Eric, are you gonna come up and talk about what was on, uh, item thirty-five?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to talk about that here, because I probably.
Yeah, that's a much better place to talk about this.
Much better place, yes. Um, we, uh, many of you have probably received calls. We had a, um, a mobile home on Kirkman Lane, we had a gentleman that, that passed away in that, it was probably about a year, year and a half ago. And we condemned the trailer, or condemned the mobile home, but we had issues where the building was owned by one person, the property was owned by a second person. Per our ordinance, when we condemn a structure, it goes to the property owner. And we spent about a year between these two parties kind of saying, "Well, it's their responsibility." No, it's their responsibility. And meanwhile, the, the building has just stayed there and it's continued to deteriorate. So we have made all notifications that are required legally. We, uh, received three bids from contractors to, to demolish and remove that structure. I think our low bid was around nineteen hundred dollars. I'm gonna go on ahead and, and release that contractor to get the work done, and then I will come back to you afterwards, and we will then, the, the proper procedure is to assess a, a lien against the property for the cost of demolition plus an administrative fee. And I'm gonna let the property owner and the building owner hash that out amongst themselves. This building needs to go, it's been kinda caught in limbo for, for way too long. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, I know I've spoken, I know Sherry Lee and the mayor, and I think probably some of you have received calls about that structure, and I wanted to let you know that this is gonna go on ahead and proceed and get it done. Um, we've also gotten, it's not on there, but we, uh, have, have gone out and looked at about four or five other structures for possible condemnations, one on White Avenue, I think there's one on Gaston. Uh, we're, we're putting the notifications together for the owners on those properties that, uh, they need to demolish them. I don't, I don't think any of those buildings can actually be saved, they're so far gone. So we're starting to work our way, condemnations kinda take a backseat when we get real busy with a lot of stuff. We're trying to get caught up on those. So if you receive any calls about additional things, please let us know. But I wanted to make you aware that we were doing it.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Any other department heads? Joe?
I was just gonna let everybody know this morning, at nine-thirty, I had a conference call with John Hand with Electric Cities. We are currently in a hold position, uh, hold pattern, waiting for the City of Troy to respond back to us, um, with any storm response that they may need. Um, I think John said forty-seven thousand crews are responding, uh, confirmed responding to Florida. Um, there are several cities that are completely wiped out that are, have received zero response, um, for assistance. So if we do not respond to a Alabama city, we will more than likely respond to Florida, so.
And Joe, just, you know, uh, I know that you're a little bit uneasy about that, given our limited resources, and rightfully so. And I, you know, think that that, that will probably come back to us one day.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a tough call. It's a really tough call. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, item number eleven. There is, uh, resolution twenty-eight thirty-one dash seventeen about rescinding, um, a contractor for the downtown traffic pedestrian safety wayfinding signage. Um, I just wanna say that was, it was done in error. It was, and I've, I've spoken with, um, with the, the firm that was approved in the last meeting, but it will go to, this, this is the firm that, uh, the mayor meant to choose. So Christian Prius Landscape Architecture, who does wayfinding. The other firm does not actually do that work, so that was not, that was not the right firm, so I wanted to make sure to point that out.
Okay.
And that was the reason. And I think that's it for me. I do have a staffing thing on there, but I believe I've spoken with most of you about it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. No, I'll do that one, hey? Let's stay on there. Anyone else? Anyone else? Counselor, do you have any committee reports?
It's a library committee, meeting on, uh, eighteenth, which is Monday.
Okay.
Uh, we got a couple of appointments on the bike and pedestrian committee tonight, and also, uh, EAC, be looking forward, maybe by next meeting, their, uh, proposal for next year's budget for each school.
I was looking for that bike, oh, there it is. Okay.
That's it.
Councilman Boone?
No, nothing to report.
Councilman Roberts, nothing to report.
I wanna just, uh, report real quick on the Airport Authority. Uh, the Niseo Conference, the National Association of State Aviation Officials, is ongoing as we speak, down at the Grand Hotel. About three hundred and fifty participants there from all over the nation. Uh, there were four or five states that backed out due to weather events around the country. And, uh, but, but nonetheless, a, a really good showing. Uh, Mayor, uh, gave a welcome last night. Mayor had Winston Groome, esteemed author, it's pretty impressive to have him there to welcome people. I was, uh, let's see, Lieutenant Sledge, uh, spoke today. Chief Ellis, the Fire Department, was there with Lieutenant Sledge to just give a, a moment of silence for victims of nine-eleven. And then I was asked to give a, a welcome address as well today. Sherry Lee was there, it was a pretty good, pretty, pretty good event. I think that things are going pretty well. Uh, the feedback that I got from all the attendees that I spoke to, I didn't speak to all of them, but the ones that I spoke to were, "We didn't know that this was here, we didn't know that this town was like this, we didn't know that Fairhope was here in South Alabama, et cetera, et cetera." But all, all positive, uh, should have a very positive, uh, economic impact on the City of Fairhope. And, uh, those things pay dividends for, for years to come when, when people come back and, and visit the, uh, city. So I wanted to report on that. The Industrial Development Board is also helping out with the, the booth that we have there. The Fairhope Airport Authority has a booth manned by the authority, the Industrial Development Board, and also the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we've had some city employees out there. Paige has been out there manning the, uh, sign-in station. So a lot of involvement from the City of Fairhope, and, and organizations tied to the City of Fairhope, so that's going really, really well. We've been looking forward to that for quite some time. So, um, I think that's it for committee reports. We got about, uh, we'll take about another, maybe fifteen minutes to go through the agenda. Deborah, Ms. Smith, will you speak to, uh, item five, the ordinance, uh, on the health insurance benefits? Deborah, can you, can I call on you if there are questions on item six? The selection of the, um, it says, um, I'm sorry.
Is it, is the same issue, is the health insurance part of it, is an ordinance a part of its resolution?
Right, okay.
Do you, do, do we need to, Ms. Smith, do we need to pass that number five tonight? Do you recommend that we?
I do, because payroll department needs to start getting their codes, internal codes and payroll system set up and all that.
Right.
She really can't go ahead with that until you pass our briefs down.
Yeah, I'll ask questions to council tonight if you want to ask questions about this. It's a really, it's a pretty big deal. That number five is a really big deal. Okay, item seven, who will speak to that? Police Department's application for funding? Chief Pennis?
Yes.
Same for eight?
Yes.
Ms. Mazer, will you speak to item nine?
Yes.
Okay, number 10, I can speak to that if necessary. Number 11, that would be Sherry Lee. She just spoke about that. All right, item 12. Who would speak to that? Enviro Kim? Pace? Pardon? Item 13, is that going to be Richard or Eric? Who's going to speak to item 13? This has to do with the repairs for the library? Okay. Would that be you as well on 14, Richard?
Yes, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19.
He had questions.
Was all the way up to 19? 20? Would that be Arthur? Or Tom, or?
I will, and Arthur first. It's just, it's a contract renewal.
Okay. We're, we're calling you, Deborah. It's a contract renewal, if we need to.
Says 21 and 22.
And 23 as well? It's not a renewal, but, but would that be you? Who will speak to the printing contract?
Sure.
Okay, the supplemental LED lighting. Write everyone on that again, let's see. Who's going to speak about the item 26? Deborah?
26 and 27, the other, I would ask for Jeff to cover it, if that--
Okay, I'll call him, Jeff. Counselor, stop me if you have a specific question while we're going through these. We, we'll talk about them again during the meeting. Item 28, Ms. Mazer, would that be you? Or you, Sherry Lee?
29?
I have a question, please. Are we going to get the opportunity to ask a question on this?
Yes, sir. That is, that's item number three. If you want to talk about an agenda item, we ask for public participation on the agenda items. You'll have an opportunity to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Number 29. Richard, I guess you'll speak about yourself, if you need to.
It's not about me, Dad.
Item 38. I mean, 30, I'm sorry, 30. I saw Self-Explanatory, we have to talk to that, or maybe have, might have you, Robert, speak to that. Appointments, Jackson, and we'll rescue those in the streets. And 35 will be taken. 35 is eliminated from the agenda now. Okay. Did you hand that out to everybody?[1755.12]